Evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, September 28, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at 32 Wesleyo Johnson Road High School. We have students who have been on the nominating committee organizing that with us today. We have Gary Frisch, our CFO, Brad Buck, our Assistant Superintendent, Principal Matt Fusco, Sue, Principal, Superintendent Lemus, there are Lisa, school committee member, Melissa Takesair, Prince, school committee member, myself, Abby Clancy, and Keith Minio is joining us on Zoom here. So with this said, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hands button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I will state that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I ask you to join me in this. Brian Burgum is on the next way, Adrian Burgum. And he will be doing a moment of silence.
So also want to recognize the knowledge of passing of love stat member, Patrice Alasato, who was one of our research workers at Plum Cove. As Principal Dan Jewitt wrote to his community, there were many quiet heroes who helped our schools run, and Patrice was certainly one of them. Every morning, every afternoon, Patrice created students with warmth and kindness. She made Plum Cove a better place because she knew how to make children feel like they belong. Students loved Patrice as much as she loved them. And our hearts certainly go out to Patrice's family and her countless friends. So if we could have a moment of silence to recognize Patrice and Mayor Burgum's brother. Thank you.
Okay, the first item of business is oral communication. If there is anybody in attendance who would like to speak in your oral communications, now is your opportunity. And the rules for oral communication are the public shall have the opportunity at every school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with permission of the chair. The person speaking under oral communication shall be led to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their shared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So if there is anyone in attendance that would like to speak under oral communication, now is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to reputations.
We'll recognize the nominations later. The recognition is now. It's your law of recognition. We'll get to that. That happened before soon. Who else?
Everyone, every day.
Every day. That's true.
Okay, next item of business is the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council. And with us, we have Ella Zindel, who is joining us for the first time, right? Thank you for coming. It's nice to see you. Adrian, can you unmute her? Do you see in the bottom left corner the mute button? When you roll your cursor over the bottom left corner of your screen, the microphone, the video camera? Just gotta click it and the line will go away. You got it?
Try speaking now, Ella.
No. Is there anything? I still can't hear you. Ella, on the top of your keyboard, is there, do you have icons that look like a speaker on the top that might be pressed to be included? Adrian, could she log out and join as an attendee? Let you unmute her that way?
They'll, they'll, I'll try that. It only work if it's on R end, it's supposed to current.
So can you move her to an attendee?
I think what might be best is for her to call in, like a phone attendee.
She said she'd do that. Will you call in, Ella?
There we go.
We'll keep an eye out for you. Okay. We're doing that. We're going to go through a quick order of business, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items on the consent agenda that they would like to? Second. Adrian, roll the roll, please. Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Prince, yes. Ms. Mason, yeah, Chairperson Clarence, yes. Very sporting, I think. Adrian, if you could keep an eye out. Yeah, I will. I'll have to take her after the school discussion. Okay, so deliberations and educational issues, Superintendent's report. I will turn it over to Superintendent Lemus.
Thank you. So the way things are going to work tonight is that in a moment, this past girl will show, turns on a slideshow. I'll introduce what we're doing. No, I'm, I'm actually working, I'm actually working now. I'll sort of set this in terms of just reminding people where we've been on the process of naming. And then Mr. Fusco will do a grand opening and introduce us to the kids. And that's the thing. And Astro will go through some data. And then our student nominations committee will reveal the four finals. So. Slideshow. So as folks know, we've been, we're building a brand new school, which is exciting and awesome. I was lucky enough to get a tour inside with one of the folks a couple of weeks ago. And I think the students have been inside. The students inside, if you all inside the school?
None of them.
Some of them, yeah, that's great. So I just want to sort of get us, sort of remind folks, because while the school committee didn't pay any close attention, a lot of those things happened. So the intention of the process, which is approved by the school committee December 2021, was to be inclusive, so provide numerous opportunities for members of the community to chime in and give input all along the way. And we've done that numerous times, numerous reasons, I'll talk about in a second. Also, be inclusive in terms of the students at the school and make sure they played really a significant leadership role, which you will see the results of. Be transparent, so make sure that the community knew and was well aware of the process we were using over the last many months. And make sure the process was followed as initially planned and approved. And then make sure our communication now reached, helping inform people, include them, and also allow them to engage each other in the process. We wanted to recognize the forth of core values and the history. And really important is coming together the two school committees. I already mentioned having students deeply involved in the process. In this case, we're leading the process. And then the last piece is the school committee makes the final decision. In terms of policy, they're the ones who have the responsibility for naming school buildings. So while we have a community process, an open process led by students, ultimately, the committee makes a decision. And tonight really signals the passing over the responsibility from all of you students, nominations committee, to the school committee. That's great. Just, sorry, go ahead and stop. Just in terms of so far, what's been done? I mentioned December 2021, the school committee adopted the process for naming the school. In February 2022, the nominations committee was created. It includes current and past students from EGS and Vets, the folks who last year were third, fourth, and fifth graders at the two schools. Now are fourth, fifth graders at the two schools, sixth graders. But also a couple of high school students and also current O'Malley students last year, or as I said, announced, two O'Malley students, two high school students. So all who, all who attended either East Gloucester events. April 2022, with the support, with the work done by the nominations committee, we did outreach to the community, email, website, social media, The Australian Times reported on it a number of times. And they collected 71 nominations. Fifty-one of those were separate names, distinct, separate names. In June and August, the students reviewed all that input that they got about the names. So the community was able to get input on those names. I'm sorry, sorry. The students reviewed all the names and assessed them using the criteria we mentioned earlier. And in May and June, and then in August, they made final decisions on the 10th semi-finalists. It's a vacation between there, that was what the gap is. You can make it work in July. And then in August, late August, they announced the 10th semi-finalists. And we've been collecting a lot of input since then. And we'll go over here in terms of how they consider that input, what the input was, and then decisions on the finalists that they recommended to you.
All right, so this is, this is my part here. So hi, everyone. This is an amazing day. Today marks culmination of a lot of hard work from our wonderful naming committee. A committee made up of veterans in East Gloucester, staff and students spanning the elementary, middle, and high schools. We are all very excited to present to you the final four possible names for our gorgeous state of the art school. So what's in the name? Well, there's a lot that goes into naming a school, as you will soon see. And we would like to thank Superintendent Lemus for providing us with clear direction and path for our important work. Our students learned a lot about community outreach and the passion and love this community has for Gloucester and its schools. I'm pretty sure that I speak for all the adults who are part of this naming committee, that these students were awesome to work with. They attended all sessions, worked hard on presentations, and asked lots and lots of thoughtful questions along the way. Overall, it was a great experience with a great group of kids. After tonight, their work is done. And now it goes over to the school committee. Good luck. As you begin to choose the final name. And I just hope that you can join me on just applauding the hard work that these kids have done.
The video, we're hoping, will work, but we're, see if the audio looks on. It's not working. It is on the website.
It's about, we're having trouble with someone showing it and feeding the audio through that computer. So that makes sense.
So using from the website.
Yeah, we can show it, but it's the audio.
But anyone at home can go to the Gloucester Public Schools website. We have a solution.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we can hear you now, Ella, so that's good news to wait. So from the input, the form, we had five hundred and eighty-five online responses. In each response, someone could submit a response for up to three names. So it is more than that. We, one of the questions we asked is who was responding? So we had one hundred and forty-eight students give their input and seventy-four staff, one hundred and eighty-three family members, one hundred and eighty-eight community members, one hundred and six alumni of veterans and or East Gloucester, and one hundred and seventy-eight attended Gloucester public schools, twenty-six others. So that's the demographic of the amount of people that were able to give feedback on this process.
You can check more and more. Because some folks have.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So for the first response, remember there were three options. This is the breakdown just of what schools they they chose. We're going to get into the details of that in a little bit. And the second, and the third. So there were three hundred and eight responses just for the third one. You can help, so that's kind of interesting. In addition to the online responses, we had a night. It was on September thirteenth at East Gloucester School, where people could come in and we'd have a naming night, and they could come ask questions about the names, and our wonderful committee was there to answer them and present the ten different names. From that, we had twelve paper responses. So those, those answers, those responses are included in the data. And I want to remind you that this was not a vote. This is people who responded. So but here for each of the ten names, we had, you can see how many responses we had for each name. Again, some of the responses were positive, some of them were neutral, some of them were not positive. So that led to an interesting task for our wonderful committee, because they had to read through all of the comments. And they had to decide if a comment was in favor of a name, or saying, don't really like that name, or if it was just somebody clicked the button that they of that name. So that was an interesting task that they, we've been doing over the last few meetings. And we narrowed it down to four. So without further ado, the final four. And these are presented, I will say, in no particular order. The committee is staying neutral on which ones they would like. But we're going to go through the four. Each one of our fabulous staff members that helped will lead one slide. They will introduce the people, the students on the committee, and then the students will tell you the name and why it was selected. Are we ready? All right, Ms. Flaherty, I believe your group goes first.
So this is Penny Goodens. She's with me at fourth grade in East Gloucester. This is Natalie Creasy. She's at Bethany's fifth. And I have Ryan Brigham. I had her last year. She's our fifth grader at East Gloucester. And they are ready to tell you the first. And he's going to tell you the name.
Teeside Elementary School. And these are some positive comments we chose. Teeside is a new beginning for our new school. Teeside is a fresh start for everyone. Teeside is a great name for an elementary school on the water. Gloucester is by the sea, so it represents Gloucester. I like the nautical name. I think it's the best choice. It speaks to Gloucester as a town.
So they pulled out their favorite quotes from all of the comments that Amy had mentioned that we went through. So they pulled out their favorite ones.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, our next name is going to be presented by Ms. Sarah Felling.
Sure. I have to stand because you can't see me. This is grade of Simon. He is at East Gloucester. This is, I practiced seven hundred times. Natasha Diaz Sanchez. From Veterans. And then Ava Harrington, who was at Veterans last year and is now at O'Malley. So this is our second slide.
We are presenting the second finalist from the school. First Light Elementary School. This name was suggested by a community member and received a lot of positive feedback.
Some of the comments and thoughts about First Light were, each day is a new beginning. The sun rises in the east and will shine in our school. The name First Light Elementary School is uplifting and united. It is unique and most inspiring.
First Light also gives an appreciation to our natural world and logo, along with the interior design and colors of our new school. With First Light Elementary School, we could use a current logo with the East Gloucester School White House and Veterans Memorial. This would blend our two schools into one.
Our next slide will be presented by Bethany Gallinelli and her group.
Yes, hi, I'm Bethany Gallinelli. I teach third grade at Veterans. This is Zoe Jackson, Alalori, and now Bethany.
This is Fisherman's Memorial Elementary. The Fisher community connects all the people together, and the new school would strengthen that connection. When people think of Gloucester, one of the first things they mention is the fishing industry. And a strong history, in the strong history it holds. The Fisherman's name will align with the nautical theme of the building.
The name Fisherman Memorial pays tribute to and honors fishermen who walks at sea. It also represents our city, which has a rich fishing history. Here's what some of the people said online. I feel like this name encompasses all of Gloucester as a whole and bodies, and I feel like it allows children from both districts an opportunity to learn more about the heritage of this beautiful city we all call home. Now, it's from an alumni. And the consistent mascot from elementary, from elementary school through high school, Fisherman is the name of my soccer team, a student. I like this one because fishing and Fisherman are such a huge part of Gloucester's identity. A family member.
A community member said it was very Gloucester.
And our final finalist is going to be presented by Don Leone.
I'm Don Leoni, and my group consists of Paige Lambert, a sixth and a sixth grader at O'Malley. We have Addie Amaro from seventh grade in O'Malley, and Julia Andrews, a junior.
So representing the name for East Veterans Elementary School.
A community member said it honors the history of both schools.
And the member said, I believe it's a perfect mixed paying homage to both schools. A community member said, I like the fact Veterans is still the name. The Vex deserves to still have the honor of keeping that name.
An alumni community and family members that incorporates both schools equally without completely changing either one of the schools' names. This is a great way to literally merge the two schools into one.
East Veterans Elementary School, like they were named in a great, in such a great name mixing East Veterans in East Gloucester and Veterans.
Questions or anyone ask?
I want to ask a question. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, me too.
Given that you had ten names, was it difficult to come down to four? Or were there four that kind of rose to the top pretty easily for you?
It was kind of a bit of both, because we had to read through all the comments. At first, we kind of just looked at what the community said and how many votes each name had. So we kind of narrowed down, like the lower votes, we kind of just kind of crossed out immediately. For the top ones, it was kind of hard, because it was the ones that we all liked, and then the ones that the community offered. So it was kind of a mix of both.
So I just want to ask, and I want you all to be honest with me. Was there any conversations between you two trying to convince each other of a particular name?
I think we all liked, there are a few top two that we liked. Okay, so there wasn't a lot of like, anything to.
So but there's two that the majority of you liked.
And then some of, like this majority liked.
I give you five dollars.
The majority, the majority of us liked like two, but I think everyone also had kind of the favorite out of the four of them.
Yeah. Thank you.
My question would be, were you aware that it's important to the community what the school's name? Were you conscious of the fact that a lot of people were talking about it? It seemed to be a pretty good thing.
Yeah, we read all of the comments, so we know how everyone feels about the names of the school, whether it be negative or positive, and how much the name would mean to the community.
Just to add on to that, just an appreciation of all the time and effort that you all put into it. Busy young people, and you did a wonderful job of that stuff.
And we had visitors, two different kinds of visitors, do you remember? Who can speak to us, the veteran community?
The veterans and then was it?
Alumni.
About alumni came to talk to us about how they felt about keeping the veterans part of the name and how they felt about also representing, representing both communities in the names and how they felt about this two schools merging, and their experience at both of the schools.
I have a question. Keith, you've had your hand up. Do you have a question?
That was, that was because I couldn't hear the audio from the slideshow. That was a while ago, sorry.
All right, thanks. Is there any way we can get a recap of that conversation anywhere? Which conversations? Is that a public? It was not. It was part of the, part of the naming process. The committee wanted to hear from alumni and from veterans. And so we opened up to alumni from both East Gloucester and Veterans Memorial, and they came and spoke about what the communities at each school meant to them. And then we also had Adam Kuguru, and he brought another woman with him, that's also a veteran, to speak about their experience as a veteran. Okay. And they just kind of talked about their love of Gloucester, their love of the community, and how much a school defines, you know, that part of that community.
It was really amazing how the alumni and veterans all have the same really deep feelings for this community. Gloucester means the best.
I just want to recognize this again. Like, this is so amazing. Both to the staff and to all the students. Like, what an amazing job you did. Like, I hope you feel really proud and just excited. Whatever name we come up with, we choose, you did this.
Very important job.
Really excited.
It's okay if there's sighs of relief over there. You finished all your work. I have this pass show, this is the last slide here, so we'll just go, what happens from here, both for the committee, which you know, but also for the public. So from here, the school meeting will move towards the final input decision. So tonight, as of course, we just announced the four finalists names. We'll publicize that on the website and via the district school meeting Facebook group starting tonight. We'll also expect that the Gloucester Times will do an article as well, which is great. We'll also tomorrow launch an online forum for more input, and that'll be for the committee's benefit. So folks will have a variety of ways to provide input, both an online forum, a new one, just for the four finalists, email to the committee, obviously, and then also at the public hearing. So the committee's got a public hearing for October twelfth, I guess in two weeks, during the registered community meeting. And, and so anyone can come and, just like in any public meeting, try to input. But that'll be specifically on the four finalists. And then current, right now, this will be scheduled to make a final decision, deliberate, make a final decision on the new name October sixteenth. A lot of folks are excited for that decision. Any, do we have questions for us about process or like that?
I do. So I'm seeing the online forum. Are we going to see all the information, all the data from those forums? Yeah. Yeah.
One thing I just want to remind all of you in the public, this as we said tonight, is the, the online forums, just like it was for the, not only is it input, not votes. And so, so you know that, but also Kelly goes that. Not votes, it's, it's in, just like whatever you get input from any decisions, you, you folks would, you know, the school would consider all those and deliberate. So. Other questions? We can let these folks go home with one more big thanks. And just acknowledge that it's been a tremendous process and really doing a great job of including people, demonstrating student leadership for young students and older students. And I think really having great collaboration across the.
And I just want to mention, if you have classmates that want to weigh in during this public hearing, we will happily, you know, we will welcome their comments, because they've probably been asking a lot of questions and they have opinions, and we would like to hear from them as well. Spread the word. Just call it on the phone or get on their phone.
Matt, you did a great job.
Oh, thanks.
I'll just give this a second, but while I'm super tense. Okay, Ellie, you, Ellie, you are up. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about earlier, I'm not sure what was happening.
That's all right.
So we don't really have much planning. Just kind of like a recap of the last week or two. We had the freshmen elected their student council. This week, we've been doing Spirit Week for our home game in our pep rally on Friday. All the small, fall sports teams are still doing well, going strong. The Fall Theater is doing Clue, and they have their roles and all the cast picked out. The clubs have been doing good, all the meetings. And then the new program, the Police Academy, is doing really well, and it's a big success right now. And then the being just opened as well. They're going to be open a few days a week.
Question, so I would love to know who you're, who are we playing on Friday night?
So we are playing Salem at Home for football.
So Wednesday's a rally, a pep rally.
And when do you have the pep rally, Friday?
Yes, we have the pep rally on Friday, and it's starting at one o'clock. So it'll just be for the last hour of school.
You mentioned, I think I heard Police Academy, is that what you said? Can you give us some more information on that?
Yeah, I'm actually in, I do the Police Academy Club. It's with Officer Scola, and we meet, seems to be like every other Monday or every Monday, just for like forty-five minutes to an hour. And I know last week I wasn't here, but they got to like explore, explore the cop car and like just go over stuff like that with him and one of his coworkers. And then this Monday, one of the other police officers brought in the motorcycle and talked about all the stuff with the motorcycle. And he's also in the NMLAC unit, I think. So that's really a bunch of other police officers from the area. And he told us a lot about that, and that was very cool.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much for your patience, and thank you for being with us. You're welcome to stay anytime you call in. But we understand that everybody has a lot of homework or other things, so.
Yeah.
Good night. You, thanks so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So we will return to the superintendent to continue operations on educational issues.
Great. It seems sort of quiet and lonely. All right, so we'll give you an update on a few matters here. Most important news, we already covered. But as we know, every matter is here at Gloucester School, and everybody belongs here. Actually, it's a slideshow. Okay, so in terms of tonight, I'll give a summary of the plan for ongoing improvement. That's up for your deliberation and adoption tonight. So choose. Then update on school attendance zones and just outreach that's underway. Latest post, update of school attendance zones, a quick update on the million windows. And then ETS, that's private, update as well. So just a few things. First one is the Gloucester Plan for Schools' Plan for Ongoing Improvement. So on August thirty-first, we presented a draft to all of you. Since then, we've provided the details behind all those plans for you to look at. Just sort of, just to place where we are. The plan is three components. So student belonging, learning support, and instruction. That's what we've been working on now, tonight rather, and what we presented in August. Operations, so we're making private headway with the operations teams. So food service, transportation, resources, capital plan, been doing for a couple of years now. And then also IT, so the media, the leaders of each of those departments for the last few weeks. And they're doing very much the similar approach to what we have for student belonging, learning, and instruction. And then our operationalizing now, actually, so we, as I mentioned last time, the Gloucester Education Foundation has been really helpful in being a team of communication professionals. And they're working with myself, Mike Gaffney. Now, we sort of have the basics of what we want to accomplish, and now we're working on how to operationalize that, that outreach communication and community. So as I said tonight, we're focusing on adopting the plan and priorities for student belonging, learning, support, and instruction. So just to summarize a few things here, because I know you've looked at them. We had a full presentation, you've been looking at the details. So our four priorities, even student belonging and engagement at school. Number one, if kids don't feel like they belong, they're not fully engaged in school, they don't learn. So that's, that's why that's priority one. Priority two, instruction really matters in schools. So we want to continue to strengthen our instruction and better connect general education and special education. The concept there is that all students are all of us students, that there really should not be any division between students who need specialized instruction and students who are general education. So we need to coordinate and support both of those better, so they work better together. Priority three, strengthening student social, emotional learning and mental health support. So this has always been really important in schools. And over the past twenty years or so, we understood that more and more. In particular, the past two and a half years, where many folks, families, people in our society, been in crisis because of pandemic, it's ever more important. Thankfully, the Gloucester Public Schools and Gloucester School committees have been putting in place multiple, many gears that support. So we're not, we're in much better shape than many of the places. Priority four is strengthening special education to improve coordination and services, and also specialized instruction. So really here, there's work we need to do to really make sure our process of evaluation, assessment, and identification of students who need specialized instruction is, you know, clear and coherent. And it's understandable to families, but also understandable and done well by our staff. So there's areas we can strengthen. All of those pieces working together result in our ultimate goal, which is deep student learning, improve academic achievement, and making sure GS teachers graduates are prepared for the next step after graduation. So those are the priorities, okay? We could do a million things under each one of those, and you're getting nowhere. So we have identified a future state we're working towards in each, and also key sort of priorities or goals to those. You've seen the details of, that were underneath all that. Okay, we're talking about the priorities and the goals. So in the future state, the future state we are working towards. So again, the future state, I like to remind people, it doesn't mean we don't have these things in place. So I'll just use the version, Gloucester Public Schools is a warm, friendly, welcoming community for all students and families, okay? Yes, we are a warm, friendly, welcoming community, absolutely, okay? So it doesn't mean that, it means we, this is what we aspire to, what we're working towards. And also, many times, we have these in place, okay? So it's about keeping them. We're Gloucester Public Schools, every student experiences a sense of belonging every day. Children want to come to school because they're involved and connected inside and outside of the classroom. And our families are welcome and appreciated, and our partners in the education of their child. So we're doing a lot of great things in all these areas, and we've got work to do. That's always, that's okay. That's, that's how you get better, I think so much. So in terms of deepening student belonging engagement in school, priority number one, we've got three goals. Offer schools to deepen our students' and family sense of belonging and connection to our schools. So for the next three years, our elementary schools are really working on making sure families who don't typically participate in school events and, and you know, in the, in the sort of community of the school are better connected, more engaged, and are easier for them to participate, be a part of that community. And our high school, middle school, we're really focused on how do we create more opportunities for belonging and leadership among our middle school and high school students, okay? A lot of opportunities now, but we can broaden that and deepen that. Goal number two is about working, our work on chronic absenteeism. Obviously, this is already underway, you know quite a bit about it. You are instrumental in changing the, the attendance policy, which was the first real, real strong step in there. And we'll have our data teams up and running this year. And then third one here is being very intentional about working with our students from eighth grade on, really. From, you know, end of eighth grade to beginning transition to high school, and making sure that they first explore a variety of options during high school. But then each student is clear about, they've chosen them, and they're preparing for their next step after graduation. And that next step can be a whole range of things. Before your colleges, to your colleges, the trades, employment, internships, gap years, military. But we want folks to know that we value all those options, because you can build a successful and contributing life through all those avenues. But really important that we are deliberate with our students about making sure they are choosing what they want to do, and then helping prepare for that. And stop, ask questions or what, how they come to it. Priority two is strength in instruction and better connect general and special education. So our future state is all Gloucester Public Schools have an inclusive culture in which every student receives engaging, high-quality instruction, supportive interventions, and enrichment every day. And then all students grow academically, socially, and emotionally independent to independent. Speak to our mission there directly. Four goals in this area, strengthen tier-one curriculum instruction to deepen learning for all students. So tier-one curriculum instruction is the instruction every student gets every single day. If you think of the, the basic program of what we, what we offer, that's what we must strengthen tier-one curriculum instruction. Something that schools always need to do. We always are improving our practice and being deliberate about it. Another goal, two, strengthen inclusive practices to improve clarity of best practices or affect professional development and easier access to instructional resources. This is a key area of connecting special education and general education. So we want our students with disabilities more involved and more included in their classes than ever before, okay? But that takes a work professional development, takes a change in mindset, and also make sure that we have the social resources that really span that, span that curriculum for all of our students. But the idea is just like federal and state law require, that our students with disabilities are in the least restricted environment. And often that means that they could be, they need to be in classes with all of us. Goal three is ensure all students with disabilities and all English learners have received essential tier-one instruction every day. A challenge we have at many schools is because of our schedules. Sometimes we will, we will pull out students with disabilities or English learners, okay? We need additional support for, you know, for very different reasons, out of the tier-one instruction. So it's like getting double dose of English or mathematics or reading or writing. They're getting one just in a small group, not, and not, not in the main classroom. So we make sure we create schedules and have the support so that they can sort of get both. Specifically for those two, because they're often pulled from, you know, they're making choices. And many schools do this. But it really takes a different look at scheduling and staffing to do that well, to make sure they get both, and that's one of the other.
And I think one of the comments, we heard somebody, the little examination, I think it was one of them, is that at the high school in particular, it really impacts what electives they can enjoy in competitive environments. So that examination is very important.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard for, do everything, and we can, it's difficult for people to say, but, but being deliberate about it, being thoughtful about it. So kids are getting, you know, the sort of the fullest education that they actually. And also part of this is educating families on how our schools use these variety of tiers of instruction to really serve all students. And that's sort of an outreach and education about parents. And that's sort of an outreach and education about parents, with a special education, but also about general education.
Yeah.
Two questions. Give me just, I mean, strengthen tier-one curriculum, goal number one. Give me, if you can, give me like an example of what strengthening that means, that tier-one does.
Yeah, so I'll use examples you're familiar with, which are our work on English, Science, and Arts at K to five with wit and wisdom. So the whole process of piloting the new curriculum and making sure it's more engaging, more rigorous. The kids are really using real literature as part of their work. Greg Bock can say more about that, but that's a really good example. Another example you're familiar with is the curriculum review that's happening in English, Science, and Arts and math at the middle school. And then they're going to be adopting from that review, piloting, and adoption. So that's, those are two really good examples from high school.
Yeah, that's excellent, and I appreciate it. And my other one was educate families. What is that on how our schools use multiple tiers? I mean, have you kind, do you have a vision for that, like bringing parents in to talk about, hey, the tier system?
I'm just getting more of it than I do. Yeah, one of the things that our teachers noted well when we were planning in the spring is that there were a number of things that needed to do simultaneously to do a couple of things. One, to build trust and understanding through transparency to our families. And that, though we have so many good things going on in the schools, and we have, over the last decade, have spent a lot of money and a lot of time training the newest, best programs, including the piloting or the implementation that we're going through now. That's not necessarily widely understood by parents. And so one of the initiatives is, simultaneous initiative is to, to not just document, here's what GOSH Schools uses, but to actually create the kinds of parent-friendly guides, language, interactions at, you know, open house evenings or at parent conferences that will really help our parents understand, you know, what is it that we are doing for all students? Whether they are able to access the curriculum at the tier-one level, which is regular instruction, or whether they need to utilize what we've developed over the number of years, which is a really intensive series of interventions that don't have to have your student tested for disability. You don't have to have an IEP to be able to access those. And a lot of people don't realize that, that much of the same services that you would get if you had a learning disability, students are getting, even if they're just struggling in a particular area. And that's not really well-known. And the feeling is that, one, it's important to communicate so that we can more closely work with parents in supporting the students in the curriculum, but also because we find that a lot of parents are nervous about, you know, my child is experiencing difficulty for the first time. What do I do? And we want to do that ahead of time so that they understand that we have a really good set-up, good sequence, and how that works. And we have not done that.
Interesting. I appreciate that. I think I don't want parents to feel as excited about some of the programs that we've introduced.
They should also feel really confident about the steps that we take when we recognize that students are struggling. There's a lot of work that happens, and they should know that.
Just like, I think, we did a really good job of educating, you know, the committee. We made a presentation and having our staff here, and yours here, do a different version of that. Yep. Absolutely. Good stuff.
Keith?
Yeah, hi. No, I wanted to ask specifically about what the connection in priority two is between special education and the general education. What kind of connection is that?
So it's more about better integration. So I think I'll describe it in a way of what it's not first, okay? We never want in any school system, and particularly here in ours, to think of, you know, general education students are this group of students, and special education group are special education students are that group of students, and these staff take care of those students, and these staff take care of general education students, okay? That's a real separation. I'm just saying that a stark sort of example of that, okay? So there's a real sort of, you know, two groups in a sense. And those kids are yours, and these kids are mine type of thing, okay? I'm not saying it's what we have here, okay? I'm just, you know, using the negative example here. So we want to make sure that, first of all, everyone realizes and accepts and operates in a way that all students are all of us, okay? Whether they identify specialized needs or not, okay? And then you want to make sure that you have classes that, as much as possible, students are integrated into the general education class, and then they're getting supports either in that class in small groups, sometimes outside of that class in small groups, depending what their needs are. But that's much more fluid, okay? And that's fluid based on the student disabilities identified needs and the support they require. It's not based on simply separating them from, into different classrooms, basically, okay? Which is not only, it's less effective for all students. It's also, if you do that very deliberately or very starkly, it's actually against federal and state laws. So it's a better understanding, first of all, okay? And then a better integration, and that comes with, you know, also better support for teachers. So they understand the variety of approaches and practices to create better inclusion.
Yeah, I went to the West Parish Curriculum Night, and, you know, a lot of things were explained. They briefly went over the two tiers that, you know, us as a committee know more deeply. So that was good. I didn't see any handouts about that, but they did go over breakout groups within the classroom. So even if you have kids that need extra special attention, certain faculty members actually come and visit the classroom. You know, there's also other helpers, and so that's nice, they can break out into small groups or one-on-one. The other thing I wanted to say is.
Sorry, let me just, can you maybe take us on? Another concrete example of that connection is if a, for example, a special education teacher needs to work with two students on a specific literacy skill, because they have been identified for that need, there may be two other students who are general education, they don't have IEP, but they're struggling with that same skills. You can actually, instead of just working with those two students that are very well-trained, your teacher can work with all four students. And that's the way you're connecting it. So you're not just, you're not just separating out those two students. They're working with two other students, and it's based on the need of those students in addition to any identified service need.
Yeah, I know, I know from my personal experience, way, way, way back when West Parish was not as old as, it was much older. I used to actually have to go to a small classroom myself because of dyslexia, and that was kind of stigmatizing, I would have to say. But it wasn't too bad. But, you know, nowadays, I've got my own son in West Parish, and, you know, he notices there. I'm thinking about the extremes too as well. So students with extreme needs and, you know, and their, what they require. That, you know, my son in particular, he's quite empathetic. He sees these other students, and he's curious. And I'm just wondering if there are any opportunities for other empathetic kids to become more involved, maybe like in a special situation? Or maybe they see each other on the playground? You know, he likes that experience. We have friends that are in similar situations.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and it really does speak to what, you know, what we want to do more of, which is, I'll just use an example from, that doesn't really apply in our schools right now. But this is from, an example I know from another school, and someone shared recently our session, which is a fifth-grade student, an elementary school student, was blind, okay? And again, this is not a GOSH example, but it, I think, speaks to your point. And that student, who I think was a third-grade student, has a fifth-grade student who helps him off the bus into their, you know, to their class. But there are also the older students supporting that younger student who has, you know, who's blind, has an impairment. And that sort of connection, you know, helps the older students learn a bunch of things, and helps that connect between those two students, and also provides the support that the blind student really needs. That can be provided by an adult, but also can be provided by a student as well, you know? And there are opportunities like that, I think, to do more of that, whether it's a child with those complex, you know, needs on a variety of levels, whether it's a learning disability, you know, to really connect kids who are, you know, who are different in many ways, but really can support each other and work together. So I think, I think I have to really appreciate your question there.
Okay.
All right, get back to this. All right. Priority three, strengthen social, emotional learning and mental health support. So again, the future state we're working towards, and collaboration with families and community partners. We can't do it all on our own here in GOSH home schools. Our schools will support the overall mental health and wellness of all of our students. We've committed to ensuring that every student learns the social, emotional skills necessary to thrive in school beyond. So a few areas here, social, emotional learning skill development. So just like we have an academic instruction, we want to continue to build, in some ways, or rebuild our social, emotional learning skill curriculum. And really, what does that mean at different ages? You know, preschool, K to five, and within K to five, that changes over the years. What's important at middle school and also high school. Develop systematic mechanisms for early identification of students who require additional targeted support. So if you think of goal one as sort of the tier-one, you know, the instruction every child gets across the years. And then goal two is sort of a tier-two, where one of those students who need additional support. And then strengthen the expertise and skills of our school-based clinical staff. I'm just going to reference something that you know about, which is the consult across all of our clinical staff. And you can start last year, which is doing that. It's been, that is the primary way, that and professional development, and they're working together. Problems and practice is, you know, the primary way for our clinical staff to develop their skills, expertise. And then provide intensive student support by leveraging community partnerships. So when students are in really intensive need, we do already have, you know, partner with outside agencies, both local or regional, to provide that support. And this is, we'll continue to do that, and someone's deep in it, and they get more, broaden it to other areas as well. That's about mental health support and driving, driving awareness. And then priority four, this is really about specification processes, and then also coordination services. So this is where we sort of really dig down into making sure that eligibility processes, how we can create IEPs, how we provide targeted specialized support are really top-notch, thoughtful, data-based, and they really focus on students' academic, social, emotional growth. Three areas here, strengthen our evaluation and eligibility processes. So how do we, one example here is make sure these are data-based, and making sure our teachers are involved more in these processes. So it's over our schools, teachers have been involved in that evaluation process, and so they haven't been. And they bring a really important perspective to each child, from the, you're working with them over the course of, you know, months or years. And so that's one example of a way we strengthen our evaluation process, have teachers involved in that. Train them to be involved in that. Strengthen incentivized education program development. So our IEP development really dictates what services and staff that we provide to our students with disabilities, and making sure those are clear, they're concrete, they're easily understood by families, and then we can assess whether or not we're providing the services and whether they may not get back. So we have some work to do on that. Partially, that's because the Department of Education has rolled out a new, I'm going to say template, it's not quite the right word, format and structure of those. So we have the trainer books on that. The last piece is strengthen specialized instructional practices. So that's sort of looking at our separate, our separate programs, and make sure each program, this is where we have students with very complex needs, and they have specific programs in specific schools, at elementary, and then also at a million, GHS. Make sure those staff have the types of training and instructional practices specific to the students in their healthcare. That's what we do on that. That's the last piece. We are now also working with the leadership team on operationalizing the plan, because we can create a plan, and it's up there, nothing with it, that would be very helpful. So just recently worked on, as you, you know, getting to finalize the plan, and we're getting input on it. Internal communications, so how to make sure that our staff are not only aware of it, but also know what their part is and what work they'll be doing, okay? A lot of that will be you that we are doing, okay? Planning budget development, how do we use our ongoing plan for improvement to drive our school improvement planning, our district staff and school budget planning, and also administrative evaluation, okay? Because we need support, also we need accountability. And then monitoring progress and annual assessments. So how do we know that we're making the progress we want to on each separate initiative or work we're doing? And how do we, every year, sort of take a step back and say, are we doing the right things? Are we making the right progress on any of our efforts? Do we need to adjust that? Okay, so that's a sort of an annual approach. And then internal communication, how do we make sure that we inform the families and community both what we tend to do, which is what the plan as you guys have is, but then also how we communicate regularly consistently about the progress and what we're doing, where we have to go. So the leadership team, we say, sort of, developing work in each of these areas to do that. To each of these, to make sure we are actually not only in operation.
So just a question about how you would assess GOSH home schools as a warm and welcome?
Sure.
Just how do we assess that?
So one thing is participation, our people showing up, and who's showing up. Like if you think about our work with families, okay? Another way is surveys. So we've started to plan the surveys with students already. We may have to make those a little more precise or adjust them based on that as a real goal, okay? And then we have to not only do the surveys, we have to take the time to analyze them. And because a lot of the ones we have are direct to that. We haven't really reported on it too much, or get it too closely, or in formal practice. And then we can do the same thing with families as well. So those are just off the top of my head. We're going to develop those benchmarks and measurements in the upcoming months, as I explained last time, but those are just a few.
So just, you know, just sort of following on that, like, it feels to me that, I'm sure that part of the process will be to make sure that the parents who, when we're trying to engage trainers who are not engaged, they're the hardest folks in many cases to get a survey to, that go and do, you know, and to understand. You know, there's a whole, there's a lot behind what makes someone answer a survey.
Sure.
Right? And then return it, those processes. So I'm sure, I know the battle people are in the process, but I really, I just really encourage a lot of focus on reaching families who are the hardest.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And we've already, in my monthly parent years meeting, I've already talked to them about that. It's one of the, I mean, that's work we're going to be doing with them this year. And then also, they'll be doing that together, doing it with each other. And then also, obviously, working with their principals and folks at the school in their PTO, on that focus. That's not just this year, I think, in the number of years, they're going to get better at that. But the work this year is to try some things out, you know, try some things, and then learn them. That's the only way you really can get better. There's no, you know, and there's a lot, you know, good work out there that folks do, but what's going to work here? You know, the only way to learn that is try it out and see how it goes, and then adjust, so, yeah.
And to engage community partners, especially.
Yeah, absolutely. And then one of the work we're doing that we launched, sort of, we used the Community Safety Orders Group when we first, when I first came there, just around COVID and doing that, okay? And then we re-engaged them, especially last year, on really focusing on our families. And really just learning, a whole group was learning a lot from each other. Everything from, you know, pipeline to its deployment, but also presented in the parents' days, or income out of that group, but that group helped with it, you know, in terms of getting, being there as a presence. So that's a real group to meet on and learn from around how to each, certainly, and to work with them, so, yeah.
I want to thank you and Greg very much for, it's very comprehensive, detailed, and making our schools almost perfect if this really happens in the next three years. So. Really well.
Work together to get better. Work together to get better.
No, but it, it really is a dynamic piece to, to see where the focus is and where we're going because it's in line with the struggles that are going on in the world as a whole, not just in the schools. So I just wish it was outside of schools and not just inside. We had this focus. But my question is, so hearing all this is great. The first thing I can think of is, do we have enough support staff to make this happen? Like, does this proposal, as, as I will call it right now, you know, to make the schools better, is there going to be a budget impact? And what support do you need from us to make this happen? I mean, have you gotten to that point yet? When you talk about classrooms and the dynamics of bringing two and two students together that one may be identified and one is just known to have, to need more support in that area. I see an extra person in the classroom to do that. I don't know if that's how it was intended, because I, I mean, I don't know the magic of teachers. You say the differentiation that they now have in classrooms is much different than it was 14 years ago when I got on school ready. So I, I guess I'm kind of worried about pressure to the teaching staff and expectations and not having enough support to make this really happen. And I, I want to see this move forward and flourish, not have the struggles of staff being overwhelmed or, or things like that. So how, how do you envision that if you've done that already or is that to come at a new start?
So probably to come, but let me, so, so I'm not going to sit there and say we have a perfect staff, a perfect teacher. So kind of, you have to do a work right now with these priorities in mind, right? So I'll give you one example of where, in terms of what I was talking about, just to build an example, okay? Which doesn't need more staff, right? So instead of taking, taking out, like, the example I talked about with Keith, was those two students or specification students that have certain needs on literacy, okay? So if you have a staff member who takes those out, takes those two students who are different, wrote to support them, okay? Then it's harder to support the two students I talked about who are in the classroom and have the same needs. You essentially, in some ways, need another person, right? Because the teacher's doing, you know, you know, the big bulk with students. But if instead you're helping support those two students with certain special needs inside the classroom, then the same staff member can very easily, you know, can work with, you know, four students at two. And that's because they're working on the same thing. If they're working on different things, then it becomes much more difficult if they're working on the same thing. That's a question that, and we do this very well at our schools, identify specifically what a child needs, the support they need, the skill in literacy, for example. So we know that information and the question of just having different parts of staff. It's, that's simplifying, I don't want to say it, but, but that's an example where you're connecting general and the special ed. You're providing better support to the two students who are going to be getting inside the classroom. And you don't necessarily have to add staff. But again, that's, that's a, that's a pretty sure for example, and then enable to get more professors there.
Is this something that comes out of data meetings as well? So as we're talking about each student and what their particular challenges are, let's see commonalities, kind of aligning.
Without our data meetings, we don't have that at all. And then also IP.
But that leaves me to another question. So if, if that's the mechanism to one goal, does that mean through testing, that you're going to put kids, cluster kids in classrooms according to needs, so that you can share that?
I don't, I want to go too far.
That's why I'm saying, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I want to go too far with one example, just to illustrate a point, yeah, yeah. Yes, I, I don't mean, in the sense that, we do a lot of flexible group already, so this isn't new to us, okay? It's a question of some, you know, you do more of it. Again, it all will always depend on what's the need of those students and do they match up, you know, in the classroom and those sort of stuff? And then do we have staff that would do it this way and describe it? But that's, that's, you know, I want to say this is, if we're talking about more families or we're talking about better kids, connecting general and specification, this is multi-year work. So, and then, you know, a lot of stuff will be fully done in three years. So, you know, the work takes, takes a commitment over time to stick with as opposed to changing work every year. So it's one of those sort of.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, just one, one quick illustration would be, rather than pulling kids out and clustering them, what we were talking about is taking the data from a data meeting to understand the needs of all of the students in the room, we have that capability. But to better coordinate the services that are provided by Yale teachers, Title One teachers, special education teachers, rather than taking out just the students who are on IP's and need additional support. Might be three students, rather than taking just the English learner students. You know, the, the, the goal and the dream really is to have those, as much as possible, those staff members push into the classroom and now work with the three plus two other students who have been identified as needing that specific skill or content. They might join that group over there, just the way we've done for a while in the classroom with stations. It's just a better understanding and a better integration with those personnel who provide the services. So ideally, you would walk into a classroom and all same 20 students are there. They might be working here one day because that specific need, which all of those staff members are well-versed in, in the core curriculum, rather than a separate curriculum outside. That's, that's the goal. It'll take a while to get there, but I see it as more of an integrating all of it right in the classroom where all the students are.
Keith, you have a question?
Yeah, I was looking over the, something I got by email, a little more detail about, what was it, goal three, uh, goal three? With the SEL, social emotional learning, um, there's a, there's a some data collection and things like that, can, can we talk about that a little bit more?
Sure, Amy Kim is on the line, I think she's, might be paying attention here. So let's just pull up exactly, just want to get to what you're talking about specifically, just give us a moment here. If you could, and she may be eating dinner or napping, but she's on there definitely.
Don't turn your camera on.
Don't turn a camera on.
Priority three, goal, hold on.
Hi, I'm on my phone. Hold on. I'm trying to turn my camera on.
So Keith, if you can just read off specifically what you're, which one you're referring to, that'd be helpful, both being Amy.
Yeah, I'm going to find my place here. Yeah, I think it was, um, goal two, be here using screening and behavioral health data dashboard data to identify and respond to student trends in mental health, specifically trends in mental health. What are we looking for?
Hi.
There are things that, yeah, I mean, and, and how is this data anonymized, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, so we are looking at data in different ways. We're developing a behavioral health data dashboard with our evaluators and that will help us track different, uh, different incidences where kids might be released from school because of a mental health issue or there's a screening that happens. So that is some of the data we're looking at, making sure that we're responding appropriately. Right now, we don't keep that data. It's going to have a lot of protections for compliance with HIPAA and FERPA.
And also very limited number of staff who have access to that.
Right.
And, and the purpose, and the purpose really there is to keep track, are there larger trends in mental health among our kids that need to be addressed? So, you know, we, we do a, a good job of addressing each individual student who needs some additional support either by our own staff or about outside referrals, okay? But sometimes by focusing one by one, we may be losing sight of larger trends or larger, you know, you know, just, just.
Patterns.
Patterns, pattern, taking patterns in that. And if so, say we see a pattern in anxiety around school avoidance, I'm just making this up, okay? Then it may be that we need to do a broader, broader work on that, on school avoidance as opposed to, you know, what's, you know, one, one, one person at a time. And that's how that trend, you know, more broadly, instead of student by student can, might help us to support all students or larger numbers of students.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're developed, we're going to be developing this over time, it looks like, this data.
Yeah, there's, right, that one specifically in terms of, and that's taking data we already are aware of from students and just documenting it so we can look at it and see if there are any larger trends that are, patterns are probably.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if I should even mention this, but I know historically it was in the news nationally. There was a situation where, where high school students were, were becoming pregnant as a group. I mean, would that be something that would come up in this screening as, as like a warning? Like, I don't know how this would work, I mean, I.
So, so it's, um, it hasn't been rolled out yet. And I think, um, you know, that, that kind of data is not, um, going to be tracked. It's really around mental health and behavioral health data. But I can, um, you know, if there's a time that I can present it and show it to, um, the school committee, I can do that and I think it'll help clarify.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah, I was hoping, yeah, I could ask that too as well. I'd love a little tour if there's a way to do that, yeah.
Yeah, so, so like we will, it's on this, I think it's already scheduled, I'm not sure which month. But let's take last year, we'll have a, one Amy Kim come and, and explain or giving those, coming to update on the progress we're making in these areas related to social emotional learning and mental health support, definitely.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm just a little concerned about like the whole idea of data collection, especially when it has to do with the mental health of individual students. So, yeah, I just wanted to flesh that out a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe some other time.
All right. Other questions or suggestions or comments from the committee?
Oh, I didn't know that we were doing that.
Yeah.
I moved that we approved to adopt a public school improvement ongoing improvement.
Excellent, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely ambitious and comprehensive.
Thank you. Yeah, well, it, it, it's the easy part's done, right?
I don't know, that's true.
But I, I, I'll say, this, this goes back to my experience almost a year ago, right? You know, after I've been here for a year and that sort of thing. We have really great schools at Boston today. And like any great professionals, we continue to want to get better. And so our students are going to be better. And, and there's only one way to do that, if I work together. And what we want to accomplish, being ambitious about it and then being deliberate over time. But that comes from working together and that's where this, that's where our schools, our staff do very, very well. And they, they want, they, and the other thing to do very, very well, they do so many things well. But these are two of the top ones, they care deeply about our kids and their families. If you don't have that, you're missing it, so. And I've always said, great, great foundation in our schools and our staff, if you do a principal, you know, it's better. Pretty much that's all, I appreciate the committee's support.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, a few more just. Oh, sorry. Thank you. You're not getting off that.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
And Chef Rosencrantz?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so just going back to give you a few more updates here. All right, well, mainly a window and a door replacement. So the news on this is we're working with the city to move forward with the private, private funding agreement and the law order. And that'll be going to the city council, both those will go to the council next month and expect, we hope, or we're working with the city to get approved for both those and, and deliver that to the MSBA by the last week of October. We could do the PAF, private PFA, private funding agreement and then the law order. We're going to try to do them all at once. Things moving right on schedule. That's all I have to update. And then this is an update, I know I keep telling you about playgrounds, but they keep on making progress. This is supposed to be Plum Cove tonight, maybe a picture, so why not, right? So what I didn't, or forgotten was that the equipment for the playground at, at, the playground that exists last week at Plum Cove, that could have been came from Fuller in 2008. At that point, it already was used once. So this is what it looked like. And then day one, playground, DPW was removing the old playground. And then works the contractor on day five to prepare the site. We're on day 11 right now, by the way, so this is just, that's the week ago, okay? They installed drainage on day seven, especially at Plum Cove, to make it a much more usable, even in climate weather or after climate weather, site for playing.
Do you know anything about how that works?
Drainage? Yeah.
No.
I mean, I know the basic concept of.
Water goes into the ground.
A gravel, if these are, these are called, these are typically called tiles, these pipes. And they have holes on top of them. And so they absorb the water and they drain it away from places, I think. That's the basic concept, whether that's happened here or not, great point. That big semi came two days ago and that has the playground equipment on it right there. Day 10, yes, they started installing the playground over there. At day 11, you can see already some things are up. And we're painting, the DPW can repaint the benches and the tables that are there. Those look brand new. And, and then the schedule from here, this week we continue installation. Next week, we continue installation, we, I say we, I'm not out there with any tools. Site work will conclude, install fabric, limestone and other pieces. Engineer with fiber will be delivered at the end of next week. And then we'll complete the installation of the engineer with fire, that's the, that's the surface, you know? And then the grid opening will be somewhere between 12:10. Wow, so. Ribbon cutting, yes, I think we're going to work on ribbon cutting.
Lemonade, crazy.
We're going to talk to Mr. Kewell about that.
A hot job.
Let's get, get into a couple of things right now, but yeah, we'll, we'll work with them on the, uh, ribbon cutting. So we should do, okay, ribbon cutting. It's a big scissors period.
Somebody similar.
And then just an update on the tense, a, a, pros update of school headstones. I shared the proposal with you at our last meeting, but I just want to give you a, a sense of the outreach we've been doing. So met with parent leaders, so we met with separate meetings with the PTO presidents of Beeman and Plum Cove separately and also the principals with them. Met with parent leaders group last year, they were really helpful in terms of advice and suggestions on outreach. Through the Facebook posts, sending emails to all families as well as the families on the affected streets. Been doing a lot of digital outreach, a full digital website up and running, lots of online forums. We've been getting some input, not too much, but input from folks, a few folks who are impacted by it. And then emailed all families. And last week, and those families who are, who aren't being affected, but wanted to know about it. And there was, several of those who are, who live on the affected streets. They took, they realized that just because they live there doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean they're being impacted. As a grandfather, that's folks, but that we would also be working with them if they are. Especially if they have no issues. So that work will continue, we're connecting with families to reach out to either principal or myself. But, uh, but we won't really work with them deliberately until we have a, an improved plan. We'll make sure they understand about what the process is and what the plan is and whether, whether they might be affected. Talking folks to transportation, that sort of thing, um, of work.
We're having a public hearing on this next week, is there any way we can do an al call?
Oh, we don't need a, a, a phone call.
Phone call, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Just to remind you, I'm just, we are gonna take that input into consideration. I mean, I'm sure you mentioned it in the email, but sometimes things get lost in the way of volume. And, um, on the time of the meeting. And where to find them.
Yep. A little concern with folks will think it's all of them being affected, but it's not, it's a small number, but, but we can.
Say, if you'd like to comment on this, this school committee's decision to make this adjustment.
Yeah.
And, we can't make it, there's alternatives, there are alternatives, because I haven't seen, as a Beeman family, I haven't seen the, the, like, I haven't seen the way to, as a parent, I haven't seen the way to participate. Uh, to give my call.
Right, but it's a long, right.
Yeah, it gets lost in the, right, I saw your email.
Yeah, no, it's a good email.
It is just.
I just want you to know, yes, yes, and.
Yes.
Time to put all that in a, in a, in a, in a three second vocal.
Well, just, we're looking for your response to the email I sent out or something.
Or maybe one quick, at the last, just one, two points to vote.
Yep, yep.
And I was looking in the, um, newspapers, see if there was any article, and I didn't see it there, so.
Alright, there was.
It was in Friday's. Okay, I didn't see it, and I, I only have the online edition, sometimes it's not.
We had the math that, too.
There ain't it, okay. I must have missed that.
So we, we, you know. Um, just also personal outreach, so we've identified the uncharted families, we're impacted, we live on the streets that are, that are changing. Um, and reaching out to, um, specific ones who are impacted, to make sure they're aware of it. And then also we'll work through the necessary going forward as well, remember, as I said, we're gonna work, we're gonna make sure that they, that they're aware of it, so that's a specific outreach. And that's already made to respond to any family that connects with us, you know, either by calling the principal, by the forum, by email, making sure we follow up with that, make sure questions. And then, of course, the public hearing, yes, we're just talking, so we'll get more information out there about the public hearing. Any questions before I go on about that, who else? And then EGFS, best building project update, so, uh, lots of activity, like there always is, so joint professional development of both schools on, uh, yesterday. We continue to connect, oh, he, I think has his hand up, maybe on.
Yeah, I just wanted a quick question, um, about the grandfathered families.
Yeah.
In, in busing opportunities, are they gonna still be able to get on their buses?
Yeah, so we will still, and in those four areas of the city where things have changed, really three apply in this situation. For three years, we'll have bus routes going to the same places for both schools, both the old school and the new school.
Yeah, I was, I, I think you mentioned that last meeting, yeah, I think, I don't know, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe.
That's okay, yeah, that's fine, yep. Uh, and then, so, uh, joint project development, for EGFS, so bring the two staff together on, um, work together, uh, furniture samples are at both schools, and those furniture samples within swaps, within change schools, and they're collecting input on that. Then things like sheet rock and taping at Building A, it's all heat pumps in Building A. They're gonna begin installing the exterior metal panel system at Building A, which is still leaving the brick, and we have metal panels, okay, so that'll be steady. And then Building B, exterior wall framing, sheathing, air vapor barrier, generate the brick for near on Building B, Building B rather, um, plumbing rough in. And then, uh, first to the curved section outside as well, so when the visiting saw that, when you had the first coat of, of, of pavement on there. Next step was curved sections, and then you keep going, so. So, all different areas of the building. Is that? Binder, first code of binder, I can't remember the term, first code of binder, what's on there on the, on the. Right, exactly.
Uh, one thing to add to the city council approved the easement for the facilities for the, um, power for the site last night.
Excellent. And very dark.
Well, you never know.
And then the last piece is just again, I keep showing you this, but, you know, we're making, these are the big things we're working, you know, the committee and we're working on together this fall, and, uh, on schedule, on time, and making lots of progress along.
Put a big check on that second one, next time you put this up.
Yeah, yeah, so just, yeah, big things happening there, naming the schools, school headstones, I mean, but ma- making progress is important, so.
Is there gonna be an electronic sign to the school down near the entrance? Must be right, or does it have to be not?
It's nothing?
It's not part of the budget?
You mean like, like what we have outside the high school?
Was it part of the project?
I honestly don't know, we'll find out.
Let's see, then, yeah. Well, I do know at West Parish, remember, we have the name of the school, and then they have a sign down forward. So I mean the sign that I know is the school, not the one with, not the new school sign, the sign that you put out that this school committee just, no, no, no.
This part, yeah. No, I know what you're saying, you're saying as you enter, yeah, it says, well, well, some electronic signs, you put messages on it.
Some announcements, yeah, like anniversary.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, that sign.
A permanent sign, is that what you're saying?
It's permanent, yeah.
Like, I just wasn't seeing it.
Yeah, I just remember when we built the tech, we left that out, and go back years later and do it, and it was very pricey, so just trying to
Yeah, I don't know.
See if we can look into those contingents and funds before this, then, yeah.
On somebody's mind.
Yeah.
Because I remember with West Parish, we talked about signage much later.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, it should be right right now.
Right, yeah.
Was it later?
Well, like, if you need, like, since you need to design, you know, go to that work, it needs to get done, I still wanna leave side of that, because it's.
We'll ask, I don't know, I don't know, just. That's, completes my bullet.
Excellent report. Uh, next item of business is the building finance subcommittee meeting of August, no, it's not August, September seventy, twenty first. September twenty one, um. No, 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 it does, I'm just correcting, it was the meeting of September twenty first, two thousand twenty two, all the items that are needed for the business that was taken care of on September twenty first, and Chair President Prince will write the report, give you a quote as a kind link on the topics we spoke about, because there's a lot of work done. So, um, we started off our meeting in attendance with Kathy, Will, Melvin and I on the subcommittee. And, um, we received the CFO's monthly report, um, which had a lot of information, the first topic was talking about our budget, as you know, our budget started off this year at almost forty seven million, and we looked at the actual expenditures to date. And what we anticipate to expend, and that what a projected balance would be at the end of the year, which even at about one point five million. However, I don't want anyone to get excited about that, because it's only the first month of the budget, and as we know, a lot can happen between now and June, students come in. Things change, cost of living goes up, so, um, but as it stands right now, we are in great shape with our general fund budget. Then we looked at our S two and S three update, and that budget was almost two million dollars, and we discussed, um, how that money is being spent, which has been reported out, but we just saw the actual, um, expenditures to our G D, which is a majority of that money, which is up over a million. And, um, just know that we anticipate to spend all that money in that budget, otherwise we would likely lose it, so, um, but it's going to um, furniture, cycle salaries, um, services and things like that. And the S three budget, the same way, um, started off around four point five million. And projected to spend the majority of that, and this is the budget that the playgrounds are coming out of. Um, we have contract cleaning, and we also have a lot of clerical positions in that budget as well, but we, uh, um, Gary has been very detailed in his spending, and we've agreed for it, and we are in a good place for that budget. We also talked about the work order tickets that go into the DPW, happy to report that out of a hundred and twenty six tickets submitted to the DPW, eighty four percent of those tickets were closed within one week, so talk about having a dynamic DPW that is on the ball, I mean, to have that type of reaction and, um, items getting fixed and improved is just excellent work. Um, and a great collaboration between the schools and the DPW, so praise DPW whenever you get that chance, because they're doing well. We broke down those tickets, thirty seven of the hundred and twenty six tickets were built in grounds, nineteen rooms electrical, I know that we, I think, have one electrician in the city. So, um, he's working as hard as he can, twelve HVAC repairs, thirty five maintenance and thirteen plumbing, um, requests. So, we are very good at getting detailed in seeing what is actually being reported, and what is being addressed, and, um, have that data, which is very helpful when um, we look at our budget and where to to spend our money and where to, how to react to the DPW, so it's all great. Uh, we also talked about, we have a couple of hires, I think, that we brought up at a, um, superintendent's report recently, um, mostly in our business office. And we discussed those hires and how they are in place and working well, with the exception of one, and it's, I don't know.
Director Finance.
Director Finance, I didn't, we didn't get an update from you, so I'm assuming nothing has happened since the.
It's just not, just waiting to sign a contract.
Okay, so, um, there's someone identified, um, and hopefully we'll hear that announcement soon. Um, in addition, we, um, school committee conversation, we, it was referred to be enough, and this group, I don't know that Phil was here for this conversation, but, um, we knew himself, because it's a document that, well, you've seen it, well, yeah, I'm wired, I haven't seen it. Um, so this is a document that we looked at, um, we're talking about potentially increasing our school's school committee salary, which is currently five thousand dollars per year.
You want me to show it?
If you have it.
And then, um, I'll just keep.
Okay.
If you just keep going up, I'll get it.
Okay, um, so oh, we just, we, we, this document that is being circulated right now is work that was done by the city clerk who forwarded to me when I asked her about city council salaries and how that process worked when they increased payers a few years back. And that office has done some work and some outreach to some communities, they're not necessarily just our DOT communities, like we usually expect to see, um, when we're seeking information, um, of what, um, other communities are paying their um, city council members, their mayors and their school committee members. This is a document that we looked at to consider in our conversation. And as you can see by the document that we looked at, um, our five thousand dollar salary is pretty consistent. The average of most of the cities came to five thousand nine hundred and sixty seven dollars for a school committee member, and when you look at those communities, so after a discussion, um, we thought it was a good idea to at least recognize that we have not seen a salary increase, I think, since two thousand and
I just.
Saying that, two thousand fourteen?
This is, this is.
No, two thousand one, two thousand and one, so, um, and there wasn't a lot of interest to go to increase it drastically, um, as, as some communities have a higher amount. So, the recommendation from the subcommittee, um, was a motion to recommend to this committee to increase the salary by five hundred dollars a year, which would have a total school committee salary per person to be fifty five hundred dollars per year. And I saw that vote to this one.
Oh, sorry.
But I wanna kind of correct myself as I'm saying that motion, because that was a motion that came out of
Yeah.
the subcommittee, however, if we are going to increase the salary, we have to do a motion to request to the city council to increase it, because it's the city council that has the authority to increase our salaries, so probably we'll do two motions, one, if we, if we do approve this tonight, act on this motion, and then maybe do a motion to recommend it to the city council.
A motion to send it to the city.
Yeah. So it's actually gonna need two votes. So I guess I would just ask if there's any questions or concerns.
Can we put into one vote? No, I see what you're saying.
If we want to do a press as a group?
Yep.
And then if we do, that's the second part of it.
So, um, so it's a tricky question, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking about is looking, um, at this list, I mean, I'm looking at Salem, because I know they're one of our dark districts.
Yep.
Um, and I, I can't tell offhand if I see other, I don't, I think I.
People.
David.
Yes. Here, people, the, the dark districts have.
I know, it's so small, I apologize, I should have.
Company and scene.
Um, screens.
It's still a little bit tricky, but, um, so those are the two dark districts that are on here.
I think that's right, here's a check.
Um.
I think it's just those two, I think I looked that up.
Okay, um, it's just striking, to be honest, how much larger, how much higher Salem's is.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and so my two questions are this, have we looked at the impact on the school's budget of different numbers?
Well, we know what the impact would be for six, there would be a three thousand dollar
Three thousand dollars.
Pitch for six, I don't know, I can't remember if the mayor gets an extra stipend or a bit, um, salary, not that I'm unaware of.
Okay. Um, and then, just as I, you know, and have we thought about, or I don't know if there's research on, you guys have done so much work, so. Um, on what it means to attracting people to run for school committee. It's the, given how much work this has become, um, if, if this has a significant, uh, impact on encouraging people to run to open.
Are you saying because the number is low, that it has an effect, or that?
No, I'm asking if, if, if there's any data on whether increasing it encourages people significant time.
I know for communities that are, there's no. They get people to run. And I'm gonna bring up a point too, so a couple of things on this, are you done, sorry? I was also kind of ready to make a point that this would not affect this particular committee, this does not become, affect until the next, after next, right?
So, I'm just gonna put my perspective out there, um, as far as what you are, that you are specific. So, Kathy brought up a good point, is there, um, a few, when I went to Hyannis, the many years that I go every year, I talk to many members that don't, don't get a salary at all. One of the benefits of Gloucester with this five thousand dollars, and I don't know if this is the case in every district, right? One, it's pensionable, so you, if you're here more than ten years, you get a pension. And two, the ability to get the health insurance
Right.
um, is what most communities don't get, you know, so, um, while you might say that a five thousand dollar salary is low, I can assure you those that get health insurance are getting much more than a five thousand dollar benefit per year, if you look at the cost of a family plan, it's thousands, right, so, um, knowing that that is part of now as a group here, and, and what we do for our work for us is low, high pay. I felt comfortable with the five hundred, knowing that, um, I think there is definitely already an attraction in Gloucester to run this school committee because of the health insurance law, which is an option out of the other district, and it's, this formula suits that, but.
I've never had anybody ask me anything about salary, you know, when they've been curious about, um, never.
I don't think people have any idea.
Yeah.
I, I can, as the newest founder, well, Bill. There's no, there's no information, frankly, um, so.
Yeah, and I, it, it's just not something that you think about, like, if you run a school committee, how, what is, what is the pay on that? Kind of like coaching, you're just kinda like getting it.
They're coming to serve.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, sorry, just in your text, sorry, um, yes, Salem, Leominster and Keebunny are all, are just dark districts.
Leominsters too?
Leominsters as well, yeah, exactly, in terms of the whole.
That's new?
Uh, for the, you know, it's changed every, every few years, but like, all during last year, when you were showing your pairisms, Leominster was new as well.
Okay.
And here.
And here.
I, I just thought it was kind of funny, because when, when I, when I first decided to run for a school committee, I, I was led to believe by someone that, that it was not a paid position. So like, I was even elected and didn't realize I was getting anything, but I just think that was kind of funny, but.
I, I do this, as, I mean, I, I know. Can you say your name?
Yeah, no, I was just saying, as far as like incentive, I'm, it didn't enter my calculus, as far as like it being an incentive. I didn't realize I would get anything, but I'm happy to get something, honestly, and, you know, a one percent raise, you know, I, I could certainly use that myself personally, so I'd be happy for that.
And for what's worth, obviously, Cambridge pays members tens of thousands, plus, plus, and health benefits, and while they have more people running here, it's not like lots and lots, it's not like a regular competitive mix. Even at that salary, which is a significant salary, it's only dozens or something like that. Because you were asking, does it increase?
No, it's good to know.
That's, that's a big example of one. And it's very high salary, it's the highest in state by far.
Yeah. And what's, our city council salary is eleven-five, if I remember correctly? Yeah. I, I felt, I felt that that was the maximum I would be comfortable suggesting and considering, quite honestly, particularly given the concentration of, of this data. So you have to take away, you know, wall payment, which has to be very high pay. And I think of Salem, that's having a hundred outlier pay. Everybody else is pretty concentrated in the three to five-ish pay. So we, I think we thought the recommendation that this would start a discussion as, as a starting point, but I believe I commented that that's a starting point, that's my highest starting point, not my lowest starting point, and be quite comfortable with it, it's less.
Yeah. So your point, Melissa, do we know what schools, which of these communities also offer health insurance?
Yeah. No. I didn't do that, I, this is, this is the outreach I did.
It does, it does say benefits there on the record.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some say yes.
I would assume that's...
Yeah, I'd assume that's health insurance.
Yeah.
Some say yes, maybe a minute.
And Salem just not. And Leominster does not.
It would almost make sense to compare benefited, benefited committee members and take that average, you know?
Looks like we're pretty, pretty close to North Haven, though.
Yeah, one thing that I felt comfortable with is when you look at PVD, I always go to PVD for some reason, mostly because a few years before we started building new schools, our footprint was the same as PVD, they had five elementary schools, we had five, and they had, yeah, the footprint is very similar to ours. Yeah. But they do have more kids.
Interesting.
Yeah, if you look at the population.
Yeah.
Our population is lower in these communities. I mean, I see the five hundred dollar increase as a recognition that we addressed the issue, instead of it being said that we've never discussed it, too. You know, it's kind of like, we discussed it, and this is where, at least the subcommittee felt comfortable. But it's open for a discussion, and that's the recommendation committee in effort. There can always be another recommendation for consideration while we're considering the motion.
Yeah, I don't have another, I don't have another recommendation. I'm actually coming from when the mayor first brought this up, because that was the first I heard of this. And he, actually, I don't want to speak for him, but my understanding was that our, because it hadn't run up since two thousand one, my sense was that we felt that was a significant, a significant amount of time for that not to have happened, given that in this city, the city council is not periodically within that time. So I'm just coming from how I first learned about this issue. I don't have another thing to offer, if I don't have any more data.
And I can say, Laura, I was with you when this topic first came up, I'm like, okay, where are we going with this? Right? But then when I saw this information, I'm like, okay, this is what we're going with.
Right, right, exactly.
So if I had seen a lot more in other communities, I'd be like, wow, we are low, right? But we can't say that we're low, you know? And that's how we approach our negotiations with our staff.
Right.
So I see this as that same approach.
Yeah.
And I didn't want it to be able to be said any longer that we haven't addressed this issue since two thousand one.
Yeah, but I, I'm totally fine with saying, okay, it's been, it's been discussed, addressed, and we're not going to move on. You know, we'll split the table until next year.
Well, we have to do it in a year that we're not, like, this, like, can't benefit us as a group. It's for the next group coming in. So this is the time for you to do it, for the next election. Well, you're, well, you're at a quarter now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the next election for us, I mean, the next school committee, this doesn't impact us, but it's that if we're on at the next school committee.
And if, if, when the next school committee is elected on day one, if they were to say, hey, we're going, we're going to move forward with it, that wouldn't impact anybody, that wouldn't impact them, they would sit there.
They can't vote, and it wouldn't impact them. Okay.
I have motion into ta, a motion into table only because, looking at the numbers, I'm like, I'm fine. Health insurance, and, you know, until Laura's point, it was the mayor that originally is, my regulation was, you know, the one that brought it up. Oh, yeah, sounds a bit baby, but at this, we're pretty much in line, we get benefits. I'm not like, well, that's a deal breaker for me, I'm just not thinking on those lines. But I'm also totally fine if the council decides to, or the school committee decides. But that's the direction we want to go, five hundred dollar increase. Not into, I didn't think I'm going to get rich on school.
We have a motion on the table, also increase five hundred. It was seconded, yeah.
You voting on the motion?
Okay.
I guess my other question to the chair, just with Samantha and Greg gone. I know we have a forum, so we can, well, is there, does that create any issue?
No.
Okay. So move this forward.
Move the vote.
I move the vote.
Ready? I, I was gonna, I was gonna make a note that we, that we leave our salary the way this for the increase.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I don't know if that's a motion, like, sorry, we need a second, anybody?
So I just want to be clear on procedural, it sounded like I seconded a motion to push it forward.
No, no, you seconded for discussion, you put it on the table, it was a motion, yeah, you seconded, doesn't mean you're in favor or against, it just means you, you think it's worth discussing.
Okay, and now you are saying you're an amendment to...
So I don't know that you're amending it, but you're changing the whole motion, so that's not amendment to the motion, that's, just vote on this motion, and you can vote whatever way you're thinking by amending that. You're not adding to this motion, amending to that change in the whole dynamic. You vote the way you want to vote, okay. Okay, I'll go with that. Okay.
I mean, yeah, right.
So, forget that I said that, because I didn't get seconded.
Well, I was willing to second it, I just...
Are we ready to vote now?
Yeah, just for clarity, we're voting on...
Five hundred dollar increase.
The five hundred dollar increase, which is really, and then we'll have to take a second vote, what you took considering.
Exactly. Any? Are they ready?
It's just an uncomfortable talk.
It's a terrible talk. Remember, it's not for us.
Oh, right.
It's only if you get elected again. Well, thank you. From just being mined in the public, we're not voting ourselves on pages right now, we're voting a race for the next coming school committee.
That's the way it would be reported.
After they get those big winter electric gas bill, the rest of the world.
Ready, where are you, ready?
Mr. Malvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chip Rosenclancy?
Yes. So now we can change that bottom number to this unloaded since two thousand... So I'm going to make a motion that we recommend to the city council pursuant to the charter and Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, and I can get the exact section, but that's not it, that the city council approve our salary increase of five hundred dollars per year to a total of five thousand five hundred dollars, effective, effective the next incoming school committee.
January first.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Malvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chip Rosenclancy?
Yes.
That might be the most uncomfortable.
I agree, and I've been here a long time.
Not for me.
And Maria, know that I will give you that Mass General Law chapter number, I just have to worry if it was only right now, and I can't figure out which one was for the city council to reset our salary.
All right. How does this get to the city council?
We through the CFO. From the chair to the, to the president, president, yeah. Coincidentally, they know each other very well. Could be a tax, a phone call. I can't find it, I have too many other names. Okay, on with my report, I will get that information to you, Maria.
Good.
The next order of business that we discussed at our meeting, which there will be lots of action on tonight, is the building use policy procedure and fees that are included in your packets. It's file KF. And this is a policy that required some updating, just because we haven't reviewed this policy in many years. The date on this one was two thousand eighteen, I think we looked at it before. But since then, we've had different types of requests for using our school facilities, which prompted a conversation. This, this subcommittee met four times, if not five, I believe, to discuss the policy and procedures. And I just want to start by saying, the tremendous work that was done by administration, Gary and Superintendent Lummis, was extremely helpful, as they made recommendations as we went through these documents. I know for me, meeting with the DPW in the beginning to find out what was actually happening then and where it seemed to be made was helpful. And I think through these policies and procedures, we are opening up that conversation in a very fluid way. There's a good conduit from between the schools and the DPW when it comes to renting, which is obviously needed since we rely on the DPW staff to be in-house when we do rent out facilities. So without saying much more, other than this was a very good topic of discussion, a lot of input was made by all subcommittee members and administration, this was what came up to be our best response to modifying the current file of KF and KF dash R, which is the procedures, and then in addition, we created the building use fees. So how would you like to proceed with this, of having chapters? Well, do you want to read them into the record, do you want...
Would it be helpful to sort of summarize the chapters for the... So on both the policy KF and choose KF R, we're, we're sort of coming out for a few, few goals. One, make it clearer in terms of the process, okay? Also make it clearer to the folks in its origin who want to use the buildings, a few stipulations around care, around your proper use, around charges, or what happens if they don't use it properly, so like, not being a friend again. We also looked at things like increasing the occupancy coverage as well, to make this is clearer. And the other piece is, we, probably the, the largest change is for larger groups, and then also folks who are non-school, non, non, non-business, that's what we call category C, that they would come to the building plans of the committee, and then, and the building, be able to review those in the superintendent, until we've actually done that with the first one last, last week, know very well, very healthy, because, because those are the ones, those are the larger ones, that, they're atypical, first of all, not too many of those, but, you know, could produce the most significant, sort of wear and tear. But also trying to affirm, reaffirm that using, or especially our, you know, youth groups, school groups, PTA group, PTO groups, that sort of thing, municipal here, municipal, you know, uses are priority important. I just want to make sure that, you know, a clear process, it's a thorough process, and sort of adding some things that weren't really there. Places and titles change, you see some requirements around, around use change, and also that facial change a little bit, and also be more clear of stuff.
And one other piece was making sure people don't represent that our schools are their place, so. Business.
And a part of that was that they're, it's not considered a permanent home.
And another, just to add on to that, thinking back on that, is having the discrimination language added, not only, we cannot discriminate in who we allow to use our facilities, but also there's a nice expectation in this policy that those who use our facilities will recognize our policies on that topic as well.
So, is that a couple of things I went through? You guys did amazing work here. So KF, when we talk about, it won't have undue impact on the condition of the facilities, I wondered if...
Can you just point out which, which paragraph?
Sorry, it's the first graph of the policy, so.
It's a lesson.
Right, but actually, now that I look ahead, so I was going to say, or on the neighbors or neighborhood, I see you have a bow, it won't cause public disturbances. I just wasn't sure if we wanted to say would not have undue impact on the condition of the facilities or the neighborhood. And by that I meant, you know, cars waiting at the entrance, or, you know, I don't know. But just thinking about our relationships, our schools with our neighbors.
I think that caused public disturbance is covers that.
Yeah, maybe covers that, yeah. Let me cover that. Then under supervision.
KF R or KF?
It must be in KF, supervision.
Just section three, page two.
Correct, thank you, sorry. They were responsible for any damage to the building or equipment. I didn't see anything, and I could have missed it, any reference to cleanup.
Still...
But, it's already in the building, but I'm saying as far as their materials. But it's already in the building, but I'm saying as far as their materials, leaving leaving materials applying.
I tried to address that.
So.
I think it's in the.
Okay, I didn't see it, so I just, there may be.
So they're not allowed to store anything or keep anything in there?
Have we discussed that?
Right, no, I'm sure, like if they leave, you know, papers strewn about, or spill things, or, like certainly, you know.
So C, so the top of the page, which is still how I think it's changed.
Okay.
It's last, especially if you definitely say we're found.
Okay, all right, so that covers.
The intent, that conversation was held.
Yeah, I'm sure.
During me, so it's embedded into.
Okay, it's embedded, I just, there were so many pages, I couldn't.
So get it.
Okay, then under four, under the fees, I'm thinking about category B.
Can we do these when we get to fees?
Okay, sorry.
Like one policy at a time, you want me to see? Or does, or you have to say impact the policy?
No, I don't think it does. My last two things tell me if there are liability.
That's in there, that's in the, it's in there somewhere.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that in there. I guess my question for category B, and I'm thinking sort of of scouts as well, sort of.
Right.
Using as mine, like local boy and girl scouts. Are they able to afford that kind of thing? Like, with a scout troop that wanted to rent, be able to have a certain amount of liability? Or a million? I mean, would that make it out of their reach to be our buildings?
So I would say, speaking to liability, it's very common to see that in other policies. And I don't think, I know those numbers sound big, but I don't know that a policy costs that that much.
No, no, of course it doesn't.
So, but I know it sounds expensive, right?
No, 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 I know it doesn't cost that, I don't know what it costs, I know, but it may cost 150, 200 bucks.
Yeah, I mean, I have to carry insurance for like the girls' travel basket.
Right.
50 girls. Runs, you know, it covers me from December 1st to December 1st, I think it was like $350.
Okay, so maybe, okay, I'm just asking the question.
And it's something that they very likely, and you'll get that because you're using the buildings, you get to have that. I mean.
No, that would be.
So it's something that that orientation, especially one serving youth who travel, scouts travel as well.
Right.
Camping.
Absolutely. Absolutely, okay, and then the last thing was, which is in R, AFR. You refer to it. So it's 1A and then 1B. So the different amount of time of calendar day of the.
That was intentional.
So, right, so it's 14 calendar days for school, so for A and B.
Yeah.
For categories A and B. And then it's 45 calendar days for category C.
Yeah, that's right.
And the reason for that is because it's very likely that if you're in category C, you're coming before B in a subcommittee, we want to make sure that it fits into the calendar, and usually it's for a larger group or something, we can look at all the concerns addressed for that.
Okay.
So that was intentional.
So that, other than the fees, that is my, that was it? Thank you.
So I know when we get to the procedures, I'm gonna make, ask, request a change, but I don't know, at least we get there. But right now.
You're gonna request a change?
Well, I'm just clarifying, not on the fees. On the procedures, I just noticed something that I didn't pick up on when we were talking about it, it's nothing major, it's just a kind of contradiction, but nothing we can't fix tonight. But I'm just wondering if we feel comfortable approving this policy, right, on one of three documents to approve, maybe tonight, if not, we go back to the table. So that's how I'm looking at the process going forward. So other those things you brought up, yeah.
Just one last question, so under availability of use.
Yeah.
So I see July and August, playtimes when.
Should have received.
I'm in procedures, sorry.
No, that's okay. July and August, Sundays and school vacation weeks.
So what we're saying is, is that these are times when the buildings may not be.
Exactly. And when we met with DPW, it was very clear that on July and August is when they're getting school ready to open and doing all their work. Sundays, it's often difficult to get a historian, but not impossible, so we just listed that. And then school vacation weeks are usually somewhere by DPW, and I believe the school may use them for.
So we're not saying you won't.
Right, but those are.
We're letting people know that those may be.
Just giving them a notice. So I'm just wondering if we're ready, I'm just trying to look, trying to get cues.
I'm just trying.
Of course, that's what we do, that's why we come out of the subcommittee, and now to have a further review as a full committee, and we can always make changes, and that's the purpose of the conversation.
Yeah, I just realized, I need to be careful though, even talking about it, because I run something like the scouts or something. So I don't know whether I should.
You don't. Right, so you can declare that you may have a potential conflict of interest, but that you feel comfortable voting or don't feel comfortable voting, depends on where you want to go, because you believe that you don't have a financial interest in this, you, Bill Melvin as a person, or that you may feel you have one and you don't want to vote. So declaration.
I said, I think it's 268.
I, you use the building to your, for your, yeah, so. Better safe than sorry.
But know that that could be just in the fees, yeah, not a policy of stages.
That's also a very, I mean, that's. Yeah, my concern is the fees. That's right. And I don't, we're, policy in total. So abstaining is an option, what's that, abstaining is an option on voting on the policy or voting on the fee.
Just fees.
Okay. And if I have comments about that, or that I don't, I don't share those, I just abstain. I should have made the comments in the past.
You're abstaining from the conversation.
Right.
Yeah, I think, so essentially not participating. The fees, right, because, because this is transparent here, then proceedings are trying to influence the decision. Yeah. Yeah.
So you would refuse yourself from the conversation.
That should be, also a little present, which is a way of abstaining. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
268A, it's under Mass General Law, general is 268A. If you're declaration. You know, when it comes to a vote, like he could even say now, hey, I, Bill Melvin, because of my work with the youth in the city and the use of our facilities, wanted to declare that this may appear as a conflict of interest. A. And with that, with that being said, I choose to vote or abstain in these matters, and he can say, I'm gonna choose to vote on the policy and procedures, but abstain from the fees, or he can abstain from the whole conversation, whatever he wants to do, but may putting it on record that you could, it could appear that you have a conflict of interest is what's important. It's not like he went forward and did it and then said, yeah, yeah, I got to go on something that impacts me. It's for public.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think I, I understand, I do understand of it. But just voting.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the community use of school facilities by OKF as amended and presented tonight.
Was it amended tonight?
Well, to be clear, like, we're not creating a new policy, we're amending the one that was there before, so we're not amending what's before us tonight, we're amending what is already in existence.
Okay.
I can say I'm going to approve the updated community use of school facilities file, yeah. That makes more sense. But. Okay, any discussion? Let's see, nobody else, I'm just gonna state that I I'm happy we reviewed the policy, I'm glad we reaffirm that our buildings are for the community use, they're paid for by members of this great city, and I am always happy to see our buildings enjoy being responsibly there. I love to see the light that our schools after hours and over the weekends. I've been to different events where kids come through and they're thrilled, and having that opportunity where they would not otherwise have, because there's no other facilities that would be appropriate. So I'm happy when people want to use our schools, because I think it also fulfills community and belonging in our schools. All right, Maria, we can go.
Mr. Melvin?
Present.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Okay, so the next document before us is the community use of school facilities. Sorry, I'm reading along, because I find different buttons and everything. Community use of school facilities procedures by OKF-R. And my question that I wanted to ask was, in number 1A, it states, the policy says that it goes from principal directly to DPW. The answer, superintendent, hold on. The policy says that, that's what it was, sorry. Just go back to, you know, I voted for. Applications must be approved by the principal of the building, but the applications approved by the principal must be forwarded to the Department of Public Works, right? So we said that in the policy, but then in the procedures, we involve you, and I'm not.
Well, in the policy, you as well, but it goes, but it's after DPW.
It's after.
Right.
Right, and then, so I just want to clarify, whatever way it's gonna be.
No, I think that's a, that's a good catch.
Not trying to create anything other than being consistent.
So I think one way we could do this, you could, you could, you could take us on 1A, you take out the, you know, I prefer to build a principal, comma, the standard, or designate. Put an or in there, because there's sometimes where they're gonna. Yeah, okay, so, so I think the building principal are designating.
Don't you want to be involved in that?
I don't need to be involved in the first step.
Okay.
No, and. The first step, the, what we laid out in the policy, which is proved, is the right approach. First, building principal, DPW says yes, we can do something about that, come to you for final.
Right, but the policy, I think, says it in a way that is intended, which is, it goes to principal, in the principal's sense, it's DPW.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm saying. The policy's correct.
Yeah, for procedures, we don't want to say they need to submit to DPW, we just probably want to say.
For the building principal.
That it gets. Right, yes, this is about submission.
Right, it's going to all three, or.
Yes, it's submitted to the building principal and the superintendent.
Yes.
So we need to take out and the superintendent, because it's not being submitted to you.
Exactly right, I mean, yes, I agree.
Okay, that's what it was.
And then the same thing if it was one.
Yeah, can Maria take out and that super? What can be? It's just going to go in itself. Oh, and then the only other information?
Yep.
We just get to D first, availability, so on a 2D, plus the use of school facilities must be submitted to the building principal 14 days prior to the date, so should we put 14 slash 45?
No, this was meant to be taken out, because we moved it up to 1A.
Okay, so that's not even.
Yeah, so we'll take out, we'll take out 2D, just because it's redundant.
Okay, so take that out, and then it's kind of incomplete, because we don't have the capacities for the schools listed.
We can have those.
So we'll have to add those after the fact. And I just want to point out that one clear directive that's coming out of this policy is that elementary classrooms will not be used, only the arts or music classrooms will be used. They can class them, they can come to the high school, run the elementary schools.
I got one change. Number four, fees, 4A and 4B should just be footplucked. So 4B should be 4A, and 4A should be 4B. Who would read better?
And then my other question is, are we expecting all school groups and youth groups to pay a $50 application? I think. Yeah, maybe, yeah, so I don't think so. So just a group C?
Oh, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not a group A. There are costs, processes.
Okay.
A lot of processes.
B and C is what you are.
Yeah.
So that was my question about the applications, can we be refundable for category B?
Yeah.
Category Bs.
Right, again, for groups that, I guess for B, just thinking this through, which are sort of, you know, more likely to be granted given time and space. I'm just thinking of like low, income, low, you know, little cash groups. If they don't get, if they're not able to use the facility.
Could be a big, so I would refer to, when you're looking at the building, we discussed this, and we discussed how groups charge fees per student and investment. I mean, I think Kathy brought it up, when you sign a child up for a HV membership, isn't it, the parent expects that money to be used towards things like that.
Okay.
So, but I also want to point out that in the fees, I think it is, if I'm wrong, sorry, that it mentions if you feel you, you can apply for some sort of waiver or loading is in there as well.
Okay.
So if someone feels that they absolutely can't afford it under any condition.
I was just thinking about the non-refundable application fee.
Yeah, we talked about that, and how there is a cost to.
Right, well, it's a cost to this process.
This one, that can be 14.
No, 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 that's not in the fees.
Right, yeah, any group requesting a waiver or reduced rate to your financial hardship, so there's an expectation that there's something there.
Okay, just in case.
There's a.
Right, okay.
Discretion there.
Right.
That can be used. Is there any other? So many copies of this policy. So when I see we changed, we're flipping A and B with the fees, Maria, I guess it's geared towards you. So from what I see, you changed, is we're, we're flipping A and B with the fees, and Maria, this, I guess, is geared towards you, um, adding categories B and C to letter four D. And then.
Spell that.
Application fee.
Yeah.
What?
The application fee.
Yeah, it's for B and C. Yeah, categories B and C, and then, um, taking out four D, I mean, I'm sorry, two D. They remove. And then taking out, under one A and one B, taking out superintendent or designate. So, and then knowing we'll have to add in our motion that this will be filled in, the application, yeah, maximum capacity. So my only, um, question suggestion is, we're taking out two D, but I like the sentence that I think should go above, about timing of submission, which says this ensures the appropriate processing of the application and adequate coverage for the event.
Yeah, right, which, for some reason, we took out one B, we took out one A and one B. Because if you look at the bottom of one B, that's there, but.
It's there.
But deleted for some reason.
Right.
Well, we can put it, put it back in there and also.
One A, yeah, okay, so we're moving that sentence, last sentence of two D, and adding it to one A or one B. Any other? I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the community use of school facilities procedures by OKF dash R, with the amendments made tonight, knowing the administration will fill in the capacity limits under every D when that information is changed.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion?
Okay. I, can I ask a quick question about, uh, audio equipment and, and the like?
Yeah.
If somebody's bringing in their own equipment, I see that, um, we're, you know, obvious, it's obvious that our own technicians would want to run our own equipment, but if they bring in their own equipment, is, is that still required? Like maybe gymnasium, or, or, that's an athletic facility, but, um, there might be a situation where they're bringing their own sound reinforcement, for instance.
Um, I think it depends on whether or not that, like, for instance, that's being hooked into our system. Okay, if it separates its own amplifiers, you know, prob- probably okay, but I think we would definitely also have concern on that. We have to work with the group, because our electrical, like, if you did that at Beaman, that probably would blow up the building, okay? No, okay, that's exaggeration.
No, but it could.
But it, it would, the electrical service at Beaman is just very old and, and, and probably can't tolerate some things, right? So, but, um, but no, I think, I think it would stand alone, and that, you know, that's, uh, Maria, we had this situation in the past?
What were you asking us?
We have.
Probably have, right? Yeah, but that, that's, and then we would, we would work with the, like, like, for example, that would be laid out, that'd be explained on the building use application, and then we would work with that group to make sure that either we had the right technician and/or they were doing it in a way that wouldn't harm the, harm the.
Yeah, and, um, so that, it's kind of addressed a little bit in the fee schedule too, as a footnote?
Yeah, where it says, if a individual person are required, the fee will determine the time, and I mean, it has a, it has the technical assistance, which is a teacher-student, that's, that's for audio and video, visual, audio and visual, but then also if we did, if we need that additional piece.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? Yeah? Maria, we have to go call up.
Mr. Melvin.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
And Jennifer's plans.
Yes. Excellent. Um, on to the fees. Um, we had a discussion, we added fees and decided to, at the recommendation of administration, come up with three separate groups. Um, clearly, it was a difficult conversation when, we are trying to determine how to categorize, you know, built, to try to define those lines was very difficult. There was a soft spot for the girl scouts, and I think we even discussed not changing that fee this year, because they're probably already under agreement, who will do it next year, that way they have a notice of it, as opposed to implementing it immediately. Um, but at the same time, realize that we can't just pick and choose certain groups that we may feel may not be as profitable, um, and that we had to draw these lines in the way that they are presented tonight, as far as, are you school, or are you uh, and related to Gloucester in some capacity, or are you not? You know, that was the best way, otherwise we would have additional groups, and it could get more complicated. Um, so we tried to have the simplest lines drawn, knowing that there'll be struggles in some. Um, that can be, that have the language and the procedures to, um, have that discretion with the superintendent. And, and I believe historically, we always had language that said the superintendent may make the decision to waive fees. So I think that paragraph kind of allows that conversation to lash.
Yeah, I, just to say, as you said, I, I think it is important that people use our buildings, especially, you know, youth groups. Yeah. Especially students and families who are in our schools. Our school, other positive, this feels significant.
Look at the fees, um, there was some set before our conversation, and they've gone up anywhere from five to ten dollars per hour. So it's not really excessive. Um, if you look at the external fees, those went down. The, it was forty dollars, and we thought it was gonna have to go up higher, but then it does, so.
Yeah. From my perspective, as long as the superintendent has discretion, you know, I feel confident.
Yeah, this is gonna be a live document that gets reviewed.
The fees get reviewed every year.
Fees, yeah, and manually, so we can take into account if we feel like that there's been a loss because of the fees, then we talk about it the next session.
The group A includes all school-related. Yeah, anything, yeah.
Um, Keith, did you have any questions? Are you going to move forward?
No, not right now.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the building use fee schedule for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three as presented.
Okay.
Any further discussion? No, any further discussion, sorry. I'm just writing it down to myself to remind me to.
Roll call, Maria.
Mr. Melvin.
Present.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes. Jennifer's plans.
Yes. And I don't know, was this motion on the agenda?
Yeah. All this.
Yeah, okay, I didn't look.
Yeah, policy, fees, and procedure, all there.
No, 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 there was another motion to approve the Gloucester four hundred that we did at the seven level.
Oh, I thought you were.
I didn't have to bring those.
We're not gonna bring it here.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, because it came on my action list from Maria, so I just want to make sure that we're covered. So with that being said, to conclude my report, I'm gonna add that, um, which we'll do in the future, the B and a subcommittee reviewed an application for rental for the Gloucester four hundred that was gonna happen in January. So we had a introductory conversation and kind of gave a nod that, um, we want to move forward with this, but notice there's a lot more information for us to consider once it's presented to us, so, um, we're on a path of approval, I would say, for the Gloucester four hundred. Yeah, I can finish my report. Thank you. Okay, well, good work. And we have one more item of action, which is approval and acceptance of the Gloucester Education Foundation grants. Um, number one, six thousand dollars for annual approval of all over funding for Gloucester High School summer advanced placement classes. And number two, thirteen thousand one hundred dollars for annual approval and all over funding for grades four, eight, say, appropriate, high sum.
Okay.
Any discussion? Um, we have, roll call, please.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
And Jennifer's plans.
Yes, and I think I just want to highlight, I assume that thirteen thousand is for music instruction, but. It's happy access to, um, knowing that I went to the concert of the younger musicians. It's really quite a filled stage, so there's a lot of interest, which is great.
Maybe a bigger stage.
Maybe a bigger stage, wow.
Automatic.
Let's talk about that.
Here's a problematic.
Okay, so the last thing is discussion, uh, or East Gloucester, the discussion and other communication, East Gloucester veterans, where we're also a little bit. Already done, um, and now we will be going into executive session, um, for the following purposes, and we will return to open the session. Return, um, purpose one is to discuss the personnel contract pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A. And the second purpose is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Gloucester Teachers Association and the Gloucester Association of Education Fair Professionals, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-three, B, and I.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes. Thank you, anyone in attendance, for sticking with us, have a good evening, and we will only be coming out to adjourn.